Thank you, sir. I'd like to call the February 12th, 2015 meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Could you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
First order of business today is City Council minutes of the meetings of January 8th,
2015, January 13th, 2015, special meeting, and January 31st, City Council retreat. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the minutes of January 8th, January 13th, special meeting, and the January 31st retreat.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton. Aye. Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Under matters of special privilege, Jack, I think there's someone you'd like to recognize.
Yes, sir. Today we have with us our new deputy chief of the fire department, and it's Larry Snyder. So Larry doesn't know I'm going to do this, but he's here. So Larry, just stand a second. Larry's here filling in for Chief Dent, who's away on the Suri Nuclear Power Drill exercise. So you'll be hearing from Chief Snyder a little bit later, but I want to just introduce him to you. Larry is a 2001 graduate of William &amp; Mary, and then he went back to Hanover and spent 13 years and rapidly worked his way up in the Hanover Fire Department. And we were really fortunate to get him onboard in October as the city's deputy chief. This is a position that we've had for several years. We left unfilled due to the budget crunch, and we finally were in a position where we could fill that position. So we welcome you here, Larry.
Thank you, sir.
I think we all had a chance to meet you as well and welcome, and thank you for serving the city of Williamsburg.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next order of business, public hearings. I believe we have none today. And that leads us to reports, and we do have a number. The first of the monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
I have nothing in particular to point out this month, but be happy to answer any questions for Mr. Sarah, who's here.
Any questions on the financial reports? Okay, monthly department operating reports.
Again, just every month, under the City Manager section of this report, we note the new businesses which have opened in Williamsburg over the past month, and we have several that are listed in your report, and it's always good to see new businesses opening in Williamsburg.
Any questions? I do have one question that's looking at this really perplexed me a little bit. Under the Refuge and Recycling, the set-out rates for recycling seem to be way up, but the amount, the tons, don't seem to match that. Could you take a look and get back to us on? And part of that may be a transition from one vendor to another vendor. I don't know.
Right, right. And Dan, do you want to say anything now, or do you want to? Do we answer you now?
Oh, yeah. I didn't know whether you had an answer.
Well, we'll find out.
It's, that's exactly what it is. The vendor transition, we're reporting, we're trying to go through and make sure the reports are right and doing that kind of thing, doing some checks and whatnot. We noticed the same thing.
Okay.
I think the service has gone well, that kind of thing, but we are questioning some of the numbers.
Okay.
Been working.
Okay. Yeah, the set-out rates are impressive. So good. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on operating reports? If not, City Manager reports. First of those is residential uses in B2 zone and creation of a new zoning district for adaptive housing.
Yes, sir. We discussed this at some length at the meeting on Monday, and we have for you a staff memorandum which proposes a particular methodology to take in establishing a new zone for adaptive housing, and that was discussed at some length on Monday. And you made some suggested amendments to that ordinance. And Mr. Nestor, do you want to give us a quick overview of those amendments?
You have a copy in your packet of the revised ordinance incorporating the changes that were discussed at the work session on Monday as a result of the commission's discussion where the number of units in subsection C was no more than one existing hotel motel in the city could be considered for adaptive housing. That's been changed to read, "No more than a total of 100 adaptive housing units shall be permitted in the city, and there shall be no more than 50 units in an individual adaptive housing project." The original proposal had, guess what you would call, a pre-selection process prior to someone being authorized to apply for rezoning. That has been, that requirement has been eliminated, and the standards that were listed in there have been put in a new section called Review Standards, and we have added to the review standards the wording, "The inclusion of housing suitable for seniors and for persons with disabilities when it is appropriate as part of the adaptive housing facility." So I believe that those changes incorporated the provisions that council had wanted to add based on the discussion of Monday's work session.
Any questions for Reed about that? I had a question about another issue, and this is inspections. I understand that for apartment complexes, the fire department does an annual inspection? Is that, how does that exactly work?
Well, I know there's an annual inspection on hotels and motels. There's annual inspection on apartment complexes.
Yes, there's an annual review.
So there is an annual review by, for safety standards? Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't sure of that, and I had been thinking about, do we want to put some type of inspection like we have in the rental inspection district? And I don't know what, I don't feel strongly about that, given that there's an annual sort of safety inspection.
You looking for feedback?
Yeah.
I think if there's an annual fire inspection, they would cover most anything that I can imagine would be of concern.
Okay. Yeah, I do, too. Okay. Any other questions?
Are we going to discuss?
We can.
Now, I don't want to hold Mr. Nestor.
Yeah, thank you, Reed. I appreciate that. Given that, I'll turn to council for any discussion, comments.
I'll make a couple of comments.
Okay.
Possibly reserve the right to have a few more, depending on what else is said. I think that when this first came up, there was some question as to how we should move forward, and it took staff a little bit of time to put something together, and it took us a little bit of time to consider it. But I think this end result is a pretty good collaboration between a variety of viewpoints and provides an opportunity, not only for businesspeople who are in the right situation to adaptively reuse some of their property, but it also helps us meet a pressing need within this community for certain sectors to find reasonable, affordable housing that's provided by the private sector and not solely by the public. This is not subsidized. This is market rate housing. But if we can get people who, if we can get applicants really committed to do something to provide inventory that meets the needs of seniors or the disabled, we've heard repeatedly how much demand there is for that in this area. So I think that's a very positive situation. All that said, I do still wonder if, we seem to all agree on Monday that we weren't going to go with the competitive process, so that's been eliminated. And I think we also agreed that we had one applicant who put forth a proposal, and we felt comfortable moving forward with some adaptation of that, as long as it meets the criteria set up in the PDH, that they should get first shot at the rezoning. They should facilitate that rezoning. So that, if that's the case, then I wonder about the utility or value of simply, I'm jumping ahead to another item now, granting the SUP on that same piece of property that's, or by the same applicant. And then when this all comes to fruition, because it still has to go, we're not authorizing this. We're not passing it. We're just sending this to Planning Commission to ask them to have a conversation about it. They'll do their great work and add to it and take from it and send us back something that may be the same or may be a little bit different. But once that's done, if we already have the SUP in place, we could then just rezone that piece of property into this district that already has the SUP. We arrive at the same place, but we get the applicant through the process a little more quickly than would happen if we waited to simply have this go through the couple of months or three-month, four-month period and then approve the rezoning at that point. And I know sometimes one month, two months, four months doesn't sound like a lot of time, but I think it makes a big difference when you're in the business world and you're trying to get something done. Every bit of delay is additional cost, so I just want to throw that out for consideration. That's all.
Scott?
I'll take Paul's lead on this. If you look at the face of the application that we have with conditions, essentially the conditions that are proposed by this new zoning, we're going to end up with the same project, whether it's through the SUP process or through this, the new PDH. That being said, you know, I understand that the logic in having everything under one designation, so to Paul's point that, you know, rezoning it after the fact would seem to put us in the same position as we would if we were to wait on this proposal. That kind of, you know, the phrase "due process" has been used, you know, the application has, we've had for a while, you know, it's in keeping with our, what I think are pro-business motives, to make sure when applications do come, they, if they're going to be successful, they move. So I'm weighing, weighing those considerations. Also, as far as this, you know, moving the, moving the language from one section of the code to the other, I agree we ought to do that. I just want to get your all's thoughts and feedback about the whole timeline shift. I brought that up on Monday, and I didn't leave understanding what your all's feelings were on that.
Again, I think the close nature in which this item is associated with my application, I think it's best that I exercise an abundance of caution and abstain from the conversation.
Judy.
My, excuse me, my whole problem with what you said, Paul, about this is frankly the way it looks, because what we're doing is we're approving something for one person, and then we're changing the rules, so nobody else can do it. Now, down the line, they'll be able to do it, but it, it looks bad, I think, to say, "Okay, we're going to do this for this person, but we're not going to let anybody else in the community do it for at least three months or four months." And I just, I just don't like the way that looks, and I don't like the way it feels.
And on top of that, I think the other thing to think about is that this is part of really a comprehensive housing policy for the city, and we've had bits and pieces of this before. But with this in place, we now not only have public housing and elderly housing, we have various projects that we've done for market rate and owner-occupied housing, such as Strawberry Plains, we have a rental inspection program, we have what have you. And what this does is this fills what has been a gap, I believe, in the overall housing policy of the city. And to me, it seems to me that we are better off having a consistent, transparent set of policies that make sense, and that's why doing something, you know, approving an SUP and then coming back and doing this and what have you, seems to me to violate that sense of, here we're cobbling together out of bits and pieces and adding some things to now create a comprehensive housing policy for the city that works for every dimension of the housing market. And I think that is very, very important to do.
And I think the, I think the whole PDH program is valuable and good, and is a good byproduct of a lot of work by staff and some conversation by us, and with help from the input of the Planning Commission. I agree with all of that. And Judy, I appreciate your point. I just think that we've talked about it enough. I think people understand, well, I can't speak for anybody else. I think we've made it reasonably clear what our overall intention is. All I'm suggesting is we not hold up one particular proposal longer. But that being said, I think I'm not going to change your mind, and it won't pass, so I'm not going to argue that point. But I would like to hear more about it. Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Right. So what I'm a little uncomfortable with is that we would agree to these changes with regard to moving code around today and then putting a hold on it until July. It would become effective in July, and in the meantime, we'd work out the details. I would prefer, you know, well, first off, if we're going to go with today's schedule, I would prefer that we have that on the agenda in April instead of May, so that...
Well, I think, I think the timing of that is really going to, if we approve these change, or if we send these changes to the Planning Commission today, they can discuss them at their next meeting, have a public hearing at their meeting in March, and come back to us in, it would come back to us in April for approval.
Okay.
Now, my understanding in talking with the planning staff is if the applicant were at some point to decide to ask for an amendment to his SUP proposal to become this, that we might be able in April to consider both the zoning ordinance change and the application for rezoning at the same time. So the delay there seems to me to be fairly short. And Chris, you may want to step in and say, "Am I right? Am I wrong there?"
You're correct.
Yeah, so, so that, it seems to me that in order to, you know, put together this comprehensive set of housing policies, and with this as a big part of it, that waiting from now until April, and that doesn't delay the applicant, you know, it delays it for a few months, but not so much that I think it adversely affects the timetable of getting this project up and running. And to me, that's a pretty powerful argument.
Yeah. The only reason I brought this up is because this reads as, will be presented to council at the May council meeting, so...
You're looking at the memorandum, not the actual ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, and that's really going to depend on how Planning Commission deals with it, and I anticipate that they will deal with it quickly, and my hope is they will have the public hearing, hearing in March, and it will come back to us.
Is it fair to say, then, that what's in the memorandum is a possible, probable timeframe, but we're not, we're not voting to approve that timeline?
No, what we're going to be voting for is whether to send this on to Planning Commission.
Right.
And they have a meeting next week that they can take this up on. Then they could have a public hearing in March, and assuming that it makes it through their, regardless of the outcome of their public hearing, it could come back, doesn't it?
I'm more comfortable with that.
Okay. Any further, you have a motion for action, or?
Yeah, and regardless of what we would have done, or, sorry, regardless of what we will do on the later application, I am in favor of this. I don't want to confuse that at all.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council refer the proposed PDH housing district to the Planning Commission for review with the recommendations listed.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newton. Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Upstate.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
The other ordinance changes that were in there to the B2 and to the comprehensive plan and so forth, so all that still goes with the package.
Right.
Just so that's understood, that all of that's being referred, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next is the Arts District Incentives, Proposed Ordinance 15-02.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The, as stated in the memo that we sent you, City Council adopted the Arts District Incentive Program back in 2011, and it provides for new and expanded creative economy businesses that there are certain tax and fee rebates for a period of time, sales tax and to B-pole tax and to certain building permit fees. And today, five businesses have applied for the program and have been also found eligible to receive the benefits. Under the ordinance, as it was written in 2011, there are very strict performance requirements that if you miss, if you're even a day late on one of your monthly payments to the city, then you're not permitted to get the incentive for the entire year. So the thought was right in that we want people to pay those when due, but even that one day late could cause you to lose the benefit for the whole year. And we think that, in practice, has worked out to be a little bit more harsh than what was intended. So the recommendation is that the, now that you've got to be up to date come the end of the calendar year, and if you did have to pay a penalty due to a late payment, that's been paid, everything is satisfied, and, and there is no enforcement action that's been initiated by the city. If that's the case, then you would get the incentive that you're eligible to receive. So that's the change, and unless the city attorney wants to add anything, that's the recommendation.
It seems to make sense. Any comments?
I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's another example of how we put something in place, and with time, we see how it works, and if we can make it better, we will.
I like the flexibility in, you know, working with our businesses and not being, having it unnecessarily so.
Yeah, that's one of those unintended consequences of doing something we thought we were doing at the right way. Okay, I'll take a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt ordinance 15-02, amending the Arts District Incentive compliance requirements.
Sir. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton. Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
May I ask something? And I can bring it up later if that's a more appropriate time, but this just makes me think of it with the Arts District, the revision of the Arts District incentives. Would it be possible to ask staff to take a look again at all of the Arts District regulations and see if everything is working as we'd like it, or, and also, are there opportunities that we previously hadn't considered or even thought of that might be worth further exploration?
Yes, certainly, I think so. And I've had a conversation with the Assistant Planning Director, Ms. Murphy, about that. In the ARB categories, that's in the same category as several other neighborhoods, and yet it's very different than those neighborhoods, and I wonder if we shouldn't think about a separate ARB designation for that that might include everything from paint colors to all sorts of things. So, but I think a comprehensive look at sort of the whole range of regulations...
And a range of recommendations.
Yeah, and come back with recommendations. Jack, is that something that you can do?
Sure.
Okay.
So I think, I think there might be a little bit more we can do to help develop a little more momentum in that district.
Perfect. Thanks.
Not to put pressure on staff, but should we anticipate a timeline by...
I would think in the next meeting or two, but...
We'll come back with something.
Yeah, I would think at the next meeting, you could come back with, here are some things at least we're thinking about, what have you. But I think, you know, I would like ARB to be involved in that as well in terms of their input, and so, but they meet every two weeks, so that's, I don't think that's a real problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next order of business is property purchases at 912 and 924 Capital Landing Road.
Yes, sir. This is an item I hoped to put on the agenda last Thursday, but we were lacking one signature to come in and really could not put this on the agenda, and it, that final signature just came in this morning. And because of the time sensitivity that we can explain a bit, thought it important to put this before you today. And the city has an opportunity to purchase two adjoining properties on Capital Landing Road that you see outlined on the map, and the purpose for which would be to hold those properties for future economic development purposes in the Capital Landing Road and Merrimack Trail Corridor. The first property is at 924 Capital Landing Road. That's the Country Hearth Inn and Suites. It is a 6.4 acre site. There are 52 units on the property, and you can see it also includes the Dominion Virginia Power right-of-way along the southern edge, the major transmission line that comes through there. The, the purchase price that, that has been negotiated and agreed to by the current owners of the property is $835,000. There is in the agreement a 45-day inspection period in which if the city entered into this agreement, if determined that it did not wish to go through with the purchase, it could withdraw. At the end of that period, if the city is not withdrawn, there is a fairly tight 15 days to closing. The second property is the adjoining property, which is the White Line Inn. It's 2.6 acres, and there are 34 units in this motor court that was constructed back in 1949. It's on, the ownership is for unlimited partnership. I didn't mention the ownership of the Country Hearth property is Keane Properties. The price that has been agreed to by the seller is $610,000. In this case, there's a 90-day inspection period and a 30-day period thereafter to come to closing. The, again, the idea behind this, similar to what the city has done on the Lord Paget site and on the Tioga site, is to take underperforming properties, bring them, buy them with the intent of returning them back to the private sector for development and redevelopment in a way that is healthy for the overall Williamsburg economy when, when the time is, is right. So we're recommending these purchases to you. In both cases, we would need to do a budget amendment that would come back to you at your March meeting in order to pull, appropriate the funding out of the city's reserves for the purposes of buying the property.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Sure. I think there's a lot to like about what we're talking about here. We have two contiguous parcels that together can be combined by the city into a larger piece of land that's on a corridor that where is previously, was economically thriving, maybe a while previously, but still previously, until traffic patterns changed. And it's in an area that we have also agreed, I think throughout the community, here at Council, Planning Commission, at EDA, that the northeast triangle is an area that deserves focus on opportunities to stimulate economic redevelopment. And that's exactly what the intention here would be. The city, I don't think is, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but our intention is not to buy this, to hold it for the long term. I think we'll hold it as long as we need to to find the right reuse, but this also builds on the momentum of the successful reuse of the prior purchased Lord Paget property, which was the same concept. We had an important piece of property on a corridor in this district. The city was able to acquire it at the right time, and it took some, it took several years, but now that has been sold, or is in the process of, I should say, being sold to somebody who's going to use it in a way that not only creatively read, adapts the property, but is wonderfully complementary to our existing industry and helps make this center and this corridor a destination. And the more activity, the more critical mass we can create in this area, or not create, help facilitate, that's written on it, but help, more we can facilitate, the more chance other businesses are going to say, "I can either now reinvest in my property because I see the value in being here, or my property's valuable enough that I can let somebody else redevelop my property." And in the long term, I think this has tremendous value for the city's economy, as we have to continually think about how we are going to reinvent ourselves, because we just can't stay the way we are and hope things get better. And one other thing it does is it takes a few more rooms that are admittedly older inventory out of the existing hotel offerings in the city. There's a downside to that, and it has a tax implication, because these rooms will then not be available for sale, and granted, they probably weren't running high occupancy, but they were running occupancy, and the city was deriving revenue from that. But I think that what we will do in the long term to, as I said, stimulate redevelopment in the sector, but also help the other hotels and motels that are currently still operating when there's less... when there's less inventory available, those operators hopefully have a better chance of drawing more of the business to their property that's coming to the city. So taking all those things together, I think it's a terrific opportunity.
Thanks. Scott?
I can't say any more than Paul already said.
All right, it's not too long.
But, you know, we're committed to Capital Landing Road. This is something that we've studied, we've talked about, convene a focus group. Were the Lord Paget still on the city, well, is still currently on the city rolls, but were it on its, were it not on its way off the city property list, I would be a little more hesitant, but I think now that that transaction's taking place, this is a smart move for the continued revitalization of this classic entrance corridor.
Doug? Yeah, and I don't disagree with a lot of what was said. I do believe what's good about this, the purchase of these two properties has been well stated. The fact that they're contiguous, which makes them available in the future in a way that they aren't available, if only one was there, and I think that provides for maybe a unique opportunity to come forward that may not happen if it were not for the city to get involved and provide this opportunity. Clearly, we have two willing sellers that want to sell the properties, and so, and I wouldn't want to get in the way of that. But I think it's also just, it's a misnomer to think that when we take inventory out, that it helps the others. I think when this industry starts to compress, it starts to contract and get smaller, the pie doesn't, the pie gets smaller, and I think we learned that with the hospitality house. You know, we all had, yeah, I heard from everybody that, you know, gosh, those rooms would be distributed to other properties. It didn't happen.
Some have benefited.
Some, but the whole market still has gone down.
Right, but the point is, some, and I'm not going to interrupt, but some have benefited. I'm not saying all will.
So I just, you know, taking rooms out of the inventory, I think, you know, has some benefits, but it's not a long-term strategy that we should be engaged in, and not that we're looking to buy other hotels. It's just, you know, I, as I said before, gosh, have we done everything that we need to, to enhance the corridor, directing traffic, you know, power lines, other things that would stimulate that environment so that these hotel properties could have been redeveloped or repurposed by private enterprises without the city being involved? And so, but with that said, I agree with where we are, and I support purchasing these properties.
Judy?
I think doing this sends a very powerful message about how we really are interested in this part of the city. We really feel, as Paul said, that we need to move and change what's happening in the city, and I think it's a really smart thing to do.
I agree with all of that, because I think what this does is really follow up on the Northeast Triangle Commission that spent a lot of time looking at this area and thinking about it, and since that took place, the transformations that have occurred both on Second Street and now on Capital Landing Road have been rather phenomenal, given the decades for which there was very little change. So, and for me, the most important part of this is the fact that you agglomerate properties into a meaningful piece that has real potential that the properties independent would not have, and I think that's a crucial part of it. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Is the motion to approve the purchase, is that?
Yes, and authorize the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that City Council authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute any documents necessary to purchase properties at 912 and 924 Capital Landing Road.
I have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please. Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next, the city attorney reports, and we have a fire prevention code amendment, proposed ordinance 15 dash 01.
The Virginia statewide fire prevention code was amended. The definition of open burning now in the fire code excludes recreational fires that are less than two feet by three feet, so small backyard fire or a fire in a fire bowl, for example. Our code currently provides that those are allowed, but we still do require someone to obtain a permit in order to have those after discussion with the fire chief and the fire marshal. We have recommended that we remove that section from the city code, so we no longer would require someone to have a permit, and it's permitted under the Virginia statewide fire prevention code to have a small recreational fire. Both the fire marshal and the fire chief have told me this is not, has not in the past posed a problem for the city, and so that would be staff's recommendation.
Any questions for Chris? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the council adopt proposed ordinance 15 dash 01 to amend section 8 dash 47 of the city code to remove subsection C regarding recreational fires and include private schools to subsection B allowing bonfires at special events with a permit.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please. Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
That brings us to unfinished business, which is PCR 14 dash 023.
There's no place to go sit in the office, but I'll excuse myself from the conversation. I'll just scoot back a little bit. That's okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. I think we've talked about this a lot.
I think we've talked.
I think we just talked about this recently. I think we've expressed our various opinions. I prefer that we approve this. We're not going to approve it. So in light of that, unless somebody else suggests otherwise, I'd be happy to make a motion to defer this.
Yeah, I think in discussion with the applicant, I think they would prefer at this stage to defer this at least till July, and that would give them time to determine what's the best course forward with them, given the other things that are moving through.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer PCR 14 dash 023. Do I have to say a date?
You can, or you can, you can do it indefinitely, but you, I think there was a date that you mentioned.
Until the main.
July.
July 8th. Okay, July 8th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Under new business, we have an appointment to announce to the library board. With the recent appointment of Cara Cook to the school board, a vacancy was left or created on the library board effective immediately. Natalie Miller-Moore is appointed to the library board to fill Ms. Cook's unexpired term to expire June 30, 2016. Natalie, you're with us today. Thank you very much for being here, and we look forward to working with you as you work with the library board. It's a terrific jewel in our crown, and we're pleased to have you as part of that board, so thank you very much. Any other new business?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as long as you mention that. I was hoping that council would be willing to reconsider the recommendation from the last city council meeting from staff regarding the speed humps on Governor Berkeley, which I think all the information would still be in our material from last night.
Hearing, if I do not hear any objection from council, I would like to reconsider that, and given what we've heard at our work session and the perceptions of the residents, I am willing to change my position on that and move forward.
I'm still a little uncomfortable with having a policy that says the residents should share the cost and not charging the residents anything in this instance, but I'm also willing to.
And this is clearly being done as a pilot project or so what have you, so I think that's a way to think about it.
And the reason for that is, we currently do not have any speed humps on city streets.
This is the first one.
That's right.
And if I'm not mistaken, the residents did offer to provide some contribution, but since it is the pilot, we thought the city should just go ahead and cover the cost of this.
Yeah.
So at least there was some willingness on their part to do that.
But let's hope there are no unintended consequences, so we'll see how it goes. So with that, I'd be, anybody else which would be willing to take a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize installation of two speed humps on Governor Berkeley Road per the city's speed hump policy.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Walton, call the roll, please.
Do we need to add that second part?
All right, I'll continue my motion. Further, the city pay the entire cost of installation as a pilot project and reassert the requirement that residents participate in the cost installation in future cases per the policy.
I affirm my second.
Okay. Call the roll, please, Ms. Walton.
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
That brings us to our final agenda item for today, which is open forum. I have a number of speakers' cards. This is a time when anyone who wishes to address city council on any matter may do so. If you come forward, please state your name and address. I'll do the speakers' cards first. I have a card from Joshua Fleitman, I'll pronounce that correctly, Joshua Welton.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Fleitman, and I am a senior government major at the College of William Mary. Today, I am speaking in my capacity as a political director for the Student Impact, a nonpartisan and student-run political action committee working to increase students' civic engagement in Williamsburg affairs. I am here today to bring attention to an issue that is important to many student residents in Williamsburg, the noise ordinance. The Student Impact recently published a petition asking this council to consider amending the Williamsburg noise ordinance to make it more fair and reasonable. The petition had a very strong reception, attracting over 1,000 signatures and over 100 supportive comments from students, alumni, and non-student residents. I provided printed copies of the petition along with a full list of all signatories. It reads as follows. The city of Williamsburg noise ordinance unreasonably restricts the freedoms of residents, imposes excessive legal penalties and costs, and undermines efforts to foster coexistence in Williamsburg by exacerbating tensions between student residents and the city. It is an outdated and unnecessarily strict law that disproportionately impacts students. Almost 80% of the violations issued in the past three years have gone to William Mary students. A quarter of these students are on the deans list. Your signature below represents one of many student voices that will be directly presented to our elected representatives in city council at the February 12 meeting. We, the student residents of Williamsburg, Virginia, who constitute over 50% of the city's population, ask that city council amend the noise ordinance to more reasonably accommodate the lifestyles of all residents. This should be done while also respecting the rights of residents to be free from unreasonable noise disturbances. We ask that city council pass the following amendments to the noise ordinance. One, require that an official complaint be filed in order to issue a noise violation. Two, reduce a noise violation's misdemeanor class from class one to class four, the least severe. Three, reduce the fine to $250, consistent with the legal maximum for a class four misdemeanor. Four, increase the limit of allowable decibels outdoors after 11:00 PM to 75 decibels. And finally, five, increase the distance at which officer discretion can unilaterally merit a violation, specifically in regards to section 12 dash 73 subsection C2. I speak here today to request that this council reexamine the noise ordinance and consider making the aforementioned changes. The Student Impact seeks to start an honest, civil, and constructive dialogue among all Williamsburg residents concerning this law and how it can be improved. Of course, any changes to the law must protect the rights of all residents to be free from unreasonable noise disturbances. However, a better balance can and must be struck between preventing unreasonable noise disturbances and protecting students from unnecessary harsh legal penalties for noise that oftentimes does not bother anyone. In particular, we hope to remedy the unfair fact that students charged with one single noise violation must mar job applications with the misdemeanor class, misdemeanor charge. With this petition, we believe we have taken steps towards finding a compromise which can best serve all residents of Williamsburg. We intend the specific policy recommendations in the petition as a starting point for this ongoing conversation. We're excited to hear other proposals and are willing to make reasonable compromises. However, the support of over 1,000 people for amendment of the law respectfully leads me to be firm in the belief that the law must be changed. As I'm sure you're all aware, the number of noise violations issued by the city over the past five years has decreased because the city has intentionally enforced the law less vigorously as a means of cooling tensions between city and student residents. Although, instances of noise violations being issued unfairly continues to trouble students who are increasingly registering to vote in Williamsburg. Nonetheless, we believe that this time of relatively cooled emotions and tensions makes this the perfect opportunity to take another look at the merits and shortcomings of the law and make the necessary changes. In light of these legitimate and strongly supported grievances, we suggest that this council call for a public hearing on the issue of the noise ordinance. A hearing, a public hearing held at a time reasonably accessible to both students and non-students, is the best way to transparently hear the concerns and potential solutions of all the city's citizens. I'd like to end my testimony today by reading some of the comments posted on the online petition by signatories. They show the current law has serious impacts on residents and that constructive change is deeply desired. For example, Samantha Kim wrote, "It doesn't make sense that we are part of this community yet are treated like outsiders and criminals every night." DJ Haskins said, "The city of Williamsburg needs to work with their population's large group of stakeholders, students, rather than against them. Current efforts to support the college and its students' lifestyles are subpar." And finally, Sarah Taylor wrote, "I am not a student, but a resident. Students bring desperately needed energy and economic activity to Williamsburg. Their request is more than reasonable." These are the genuine voices of Williamsburg citizens that deserve to have their views represented in the city's laws and heard by elected officials. Please listen to them. Williamsburg is an amazing city, but as Jacob Silver wrote when signing the petition, quote, "Williamsburg has the potential to be even more special than it already is," end quote. By enacting moderate and common sense reforms for the noise ordinance, we can build a better city together. The Student Impact looks forward to working with you and other partners in this collective effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fleitman. Jack, would you forward this to staff and ask them to come back to us with some recommendations and parameters for discussion? Thank you. The next speaker's card I have is Ron Kirkland. Ron, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. I'm Ron Kirkland with the Hotel Motel Association here in Williamsburg. I had some lengthy comments prepared, but they've kind of changed based on what's transpired so far. I would just say, it is concerning to me and members of the association that at the same meeting, we're purchasing hotels for pennies on the dollar, we're also denying special use permits that would allow a property to potentially continue being profitable and not have to look for the city to bail them out by being purchased. That is, well, the optics of that are troubling, I think, and I think you should all consider that, and that's where all in my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next speaker's card is Gary Shelley. Welcome, Gary.
I am Gary Shelley, and I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. Last month, Mrs. Wanda Christopherson, one of your constituents, spoke before you about illegal intrusions by city personnel onto her property. She felt compelled to appear here because of your willful and repeated refusal to respond to her. The last place on this planet that she wanted to be was standing here at this podium in front of the television cameras telling her story. Over the course of the past six months, under the Christopherson's request, I have advocated on their behalf, as you well know, and I have asked you repeatedly to please respond to our concerns. At one meeting, I passionately asked you, how would you feel if you were a grandmother and a victim of a brutal armed home invasion and trespassing by city personnel triggered memories of the horrific events, and your city leaders did not respond to you? Mayor, how would you feel? And how would you feel if it was your wife or your daughter away at college? And how would you feel if it was your wife or your daughter away at college?" I was not the only one to come to you on Mrs. Kristofferson's behalf. Her husband, Philip, spoke to you in October. During the course of his appearance, Mr. Kristofferson told you, "I'm here more about my wife. The reason I address this is because my wife is a victim of a very violent home invasion crime, and this upsets her greatly. My wife, she's nervous. She has that tendency. I really wanted to represent my wife today. This is a very important thing to me, but you never followed up. Mr. Kristofferson submitted a letter to you written by Mrs. Kristofferson, and I have a copy of it here today. In the letter, Mrs. Kristofferson writes, "I have to weigh in with some great concerns I have regarding activity of city officials. On several occasions, there have been trespassing issues without prior authorization, permission, or notice, activities such as coming up to the windows and taking pictures. This is purely negligent." She writes further in this letter, "As a female and a victim of a home invasion, this is absolutely a violation of my security and privacy rights and leaves me entirely fearful, triggering emotional panic." She writes, "Action must be taken so that the rights of others are not violated." And she writes, "I am reaching out to you." She finished her letter by writing, "Respond to me so that in the future I and others will feel safe." Mayor, you chose not to respond to her. At the conclusion of my appearance last month, decided Mr. Tuttle had investigated the complaints. I waited here with eager anticipation for the results, only to be let down in what can only be called an astonishingly unprofessional outburst by the city manager. With much bravado, Mr. Tuttle said he was accountable for the actions of the staff, and then he went on to take no responsibility. Mr. Tuttle claimed that he could find only one instance of illegal trespass by one of his employees. An overstep is what he called it, in spite of the fact that Ms. Carrie Flanagan appeared here in May and spoke of multiple trespass events on her property, and in spite of the fact that Mr. Kristofferson appeared here in October and told you of multiple trespasses on his property, and in spite of the fact that I read to you here emails that I sent to the city on behalf of the Kristoffersons at the time of the incidents, and in spite of the fact that Mrs. Kristofferson submitted a letter stating that there had been trespassing incidents at their house on several occasions. Way to investigate, Mr. City Manager. You have squandered your credibility. Mr. Tuttle asserted that I refused to take simple administrative remedies to resolve the situation. He then stated that in the fall, he had sent me a letter detailing answers to concerns that I had. He purposely misled you. The facts of the matter are this. On August the twenty-fifth, I initiated a conversation when I emailed him a detailed list of twelve very specific concerns that I wanted addressed. Mr. Tuttle answered eight days later with a very inadequate response. I immediately sent another email stating that I wanted complete answers to all my concerns, such as, "Does the city have a policy in wherein the inspector can walk on private property? If so, what is that policy? Did the inspector follow the policy?" At that point, Mr. Tuttle had little alternative but to admit that there had indeed been trespassing on my property, and he reluctantly issued an apology, but not before aggressively attacking me. Nonetheless, when I spoke here in September, I extended an olive branch to you. I publicly thanked Mr. Tuttle for his response. You're all here, and I said that his apology can go a long way. At the conclusion of Mr. Tuttle's rant last month, he referred to my many appearances on behalf of the Kristoffersons as ridiculous behavior. You all saw what happened next. Mrs. Kristofferson stepped to this podium and with much courage and strength and dignity, in a direct rebuttal to Mr. Tuttle, her first words were, "What I have to say is not ridiculous." I don't think I have ever witnessed such an immediate and thoroughly convincing rebuke of a public official at any level. This is the legacy that Mr. Tuttle leaves us. Mayor, I mentioned earlier the olive branch that I extended to you in September. Well, you took that olive branch and you snapped it like a wishbone. In December, I called you out once again for not responding. I reminded you of your oath of office, and I asked you to resign from this council. Too bad for us that you didn't. Had you simply responded at any point, at any point, over the past several months, Mrs. Kristofferson would not have felt compelled to speak last month. I asked Mrs. Kristofferson how she felt about receiving a response from you. Her words were that she was hurt, offended, she felt like a second-class citizen, but most of all, she felt disrespected. But Mrs. Kristofferson is a very strong woman, and she feels that God has a purpose for her and that there is a reason for everything that happens to us in our lives. Perhaps it is God's will to work through her to correct injustice by calling out public officials who ignore constituent concerns and who don't uphold their sworn responsibilities. Mayor, at the conclusion of Mrs. Kristofferson's appearance, you had a golden opportunity to step up and take full responsibility for this unfortunate mess. Instead, you came up with this flimsy excuse, and I'm going to quote you. Part of that might be my fault. I had a conversation with your husband after the meeting that I thought, in fact, was response, but apparently it wasn't. Mayor, that is one of the sorriest displays of leadership that anyone will ever see. In fact, you never had a conversation with Mr. Kristofferson at all after the meeting. Mr. Kristofferson was long gone by the time the meeting finished that day. One need only go to the city's website and view the video of the October meeting. You will see Mr. Kristofferson gather his belongings and leave the room while the next speaker is at this podium. Mayor, face the facts. Your job performance is unacceptable. I ask you again, please, for once, do the right thing for the sake of the city and step down from your position on this council.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. The next speaker's card is Jacob Shiman. Jacob, welcome.
Hi, I'm speaking on a personal capacity as a student in the College of William and Mary and a resident of the Hospitality House, and I'd just like to say that it's my belief that city council should push for, well, as many... There should not be a limit on the number of units that can be converted from hotels to residential, just because I think the free market should be able to determine that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If anyone else wishes to address city council on any matter, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is John Austin. My wife, Scotty, and I live at seven hundred Goodwin Street in the corner of Burns Lane, and I'm very much taking exception to the student who arrived, thinking that all of Williamsburg is the same. We have lived on Goodwin Street for fifty-five years. When we arrived, most of the houses were inhabited by the people who built them. They built them for themselves, their families. There's only one house on the whole of Goodwin Street, Burns Lane, Powell Street area, that was not built for the individual to raise his family and to live in. It was designed for a very small, tight community. It is, and I'm sure there are others like this, so I'm not just talking about ours, but it is three dead-end streets. It cannot be expanded. There are no sidewalks, and I figured at least nine of us walk our dogs on Burns Lane. There's a traffic sign that says fifteen miles an hour at one point. I don't think anyone has ever gone that low, but with more traffic brought in by more students, as I say, there were normally one car per household when I moved in, and for many years, I rode my bike to work. Then people started having two cars. We were able to accommodate that because doubling it did not impact that much. Most of the people had driveways that they could park both their cars in. But now, with the students living here in the area, four, five cars, there may be... Well, one student one time said, "We asked how many students there were there, and he winked and said, 'Three officially.'" That is the typical thing, and I understand, talking to a mother helping her daughter move in, saying that there are five girls living in that particular house. I know that that is beyond it. But the point is that maybe some parts of Williamsburg can take the change of having later louder noise going on, but there are areas like our street where it was not built for that purpose, and having students there are very destructive. And, I mean, if the students followed and lived the way the, what I call residents, I don't consider them residents, they're there for a few years, it wouldn't be so bad. As I was leaving to come here, waiting for Scotty at the front door, I looked across the street at a student house. I walked back and took pictures of it. Here, it shows out my front door window, there is a chair that has been there since last summer in the front of the house. There are wooden boards that have been there, I think a squirrel lives in one of them. There are trash cans in front and the side, and there's a whole white area of paper in the side of the yard. I periodically go and pick up papers that have grown from their trash cans or whatever they throw out the door, and I do that not because I'm a good Joe and helping them out, but I know if I don't pick them up while they're there, they will blow into the bushes on my side and make it much more difficult. So my point is, the students do not comprehend what all of Williamsburg is. They comprehend the college, what the college can do and take, and they think that if they live in the area, they can turn a residential area into a... What's the word? A bunch of dormitories. And I hope that the city council take into consideration that all of Williamsburg is not like the students think it is. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I'll close the open forum and come back to council for a motion adjournment. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please. Ms. Walton?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Leading adjournance. Thank you all very much.